I have six oh one on my clock. I'm going to call to order the March first, two thousand and twenty-three regular board meeting. In the absence of Clerk Bysel, Treasurer Davis, would you take attendance?
Love to. Director Tate.
Here.
Director Dresley.
Here.
Director Zuzik.
Here.
Director Maum.
Here.
Director Hadeen.
Here.
Director Davis here. Director Bysel is not here to see me.
Thank you. If everyone would rise if they are able and remove your caps, who will say the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna glance ahead. All right, thank you. Our first item on the agenda tonight is to... We approve the minutes and then the agenda? It's so... Is to approve the agenda. I always struggle on the way this one's written. I'm sorry, excuse me. Our first motion, I would accept a motion to approve them, the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Some of, Davis.
Second, Maum.
Hearing a motion in a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our next item for tonight is approval of the minutes from three board meetings. The regular board meeting on January twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, the special meeting held January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, and a special meeting held February sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Those minutes are attached um in board book for your review. Could I get a motion in a second?
Some of.
Zuzik, second.
Thank you. The motion was by Maum, second by Zuzik. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I just turned myself off, sorry. I'd like to recognize our visitors tonight. We have a full room and I hope people are choosing to join in as well that didn't feel like they wanted to travel today online. You're welcome. And we're happy to be here doing the work of the school board in the public. I would like to remind everybody that this is a meeting of the school board held in public and we do not have a public comment period on our agenda tonight. We, I'm really happy to see that everybody's respecting the space that we've set out for the board and generally we're keeping that behind the TVs. I really appreciate that folks who brought in signs are clearly respecting the people that are standing behind them and keeping them where we can see them but not blocking the folks behind them and that's really respectful. Thank you. And I think we'll, we'll be able to jump right in and get to our work. I appreciate that. Next, we have the announcements and I see that's employees of the semester. Dr. McDowell.
Thank you. Tonight, we would like to recognize our employees of the first semester. Due to the meeting change in conferences tonight, we ended up with some conflicts and folks not being able to make it. However, if any of the following individuals are here, please come forward to the, the table in front of the board. Kate Sorenson from Tilden, Pam Johnson from the middle school, Amanda Paznick from Pinecrest, Jonah Conway from McCullough, Cindy Opel from the high school, and Megan Latch from Hastings Middle School. Employees of the semester are selected by the ISD two hundred staff as a whole. The top nominations are then vetted again by a committee of staff that represent the different employee groups in the district. Each semester, six employees are selected because they have stood out to their peers and exemplify our core, our core values. Employees from both first and second semester are then put back into a pool at the end of the year for the employee of the year selection. And it looks like we have Pam and Cindy up here, so we would like to recognize them as two of the employees of the semester. Congratulations. And as usual, I will turn it over to both of you if you want to make any comments and then to the board for questions.
There we go. Thank you for recognizing our work and effort that we put in for Hastings School District. This is my twenty-fourth year of teaching. I teach math at the high school.
Yes, thank you very much. This is my, I think it's nineteenth year of teaching and first year as an administrator, so I appreciate the recognition.
All right, thank you. I would like to, to say that what I really always appreciate about the employees of the semester is it's selected by other employees. And it's, and it's people recognizing their coworkers' excellence and who's going that extra mile and who's, who's really bringing that special skillset. And I, and I hope that you, that you take how special that is to heart because it's a small group and it's, it's really a selection by your peers. It's really quite a valuable recognition in my mind. Our next item tonight is a summary of the listening session. I don't know if that'll be Director Zuzik or, okay, Director Zuzik will take that. Thank you.
Chair Hadeen, thank you for the opportunity to share the voice of people that came in and shared with us prior to the meeting. There were four different people that showed up. The first person brought something to our attention, the gist of which is that there are two sport teams that the head coach position was combined into one coach. And there might be a lot of reasons that that was a good idea, but this person had done some research and found out that in external analysis, it wasn't all that common that it was done. And what he hopes we can do, and of course, because this happens to be a spring sport, it won't be able, it, it's not possible really to change it for this year and that wasn't their expectation, but rather that we really monitor it throughout the season and then thoughtfully plan for two thousand and twenty-four. And so that was the first person. Then the, the next three people came and talked in regard to the food service contract and really employed the board to consider anything that we can do to, to move to a position where the union and the school district can, can settle the contract as quickly as possible. And I, I will try to summarize in short what some of the things are that came up. The first person that talked to us talked about, not unsurprisingly, or not surprisingly, just the cost of living going up and how they believe that it's important that, just a couple of quick things, that it should be a minimum five, fifteen dollars per hour for the job. And another highlight of the conversation was like a two percent, two percent, two percent raise was one possibility to get it done. From that person's perspective, that's something that I, I mean, I'm not at the bargaining table, but that's one of the voices that were heard. Another comment was from a citizen that really did a good job of talking about how, you know, in all of the front-facing public jobs that are out there that are settled on a two- or three-year period, many of those jobs during COVID and then post-COVID really haven't kept up. And so just again, encouraging the board to consider anything we can do for those front-facing jobs that are often underappreciated and, and find themselves in a tough position. Anything we can do to provide a livable wage is, is encouraged. And the third person, lifelong resident of Hastings, student from Hastings Schools, presently working in food service, but also a relatively recent hire in food service. And they did a great job talking about, really talking about it from the position of their colleagues and particularly their more senior colleagues, the, pardon me, more experienced colleagues. And one of the examples that they used was a person that's been here for twenty-six years and is still making thirteen-something an hour. And so it was easy to understand their concern and I know that we're working hard on it, but I, I just wanted to, to be clear and represent them based on what they said. And I know that these are challenging times for the district, just as they are challenging time for families. So three people in support of the food service contract being settled in a fair way as quickly as possible and one person talking about a, a combining of positions and coaching. And, and I'll get ahold of Dr. McDowell tomorrow to give more specifics specifically about the, the coaching one so that if, if need be, there's, you, you have that context. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Zuzik, for that really comprehensive summary. Very much appreciated. Treasurer Davis, did you have anything to add or do you feel like that was a fair representation of what you heard?
No, I was going through my notes as Director Zuzik was speaking and I thought he covered all the notes that I had as well.
Thank you very much. We're gonna now move to the reports and discussion section of our meeting. Our first report will be from Superintendent McDowell.
Thank you. All right, so we, we've been a little bit behind in our process for the updates, about a month behind because of things going on, but this is typically the update we had planned for February. So I guess it's not too far, but we're about a month behind with our strategic planning update, given that you only have a business meeting once a month. So just as a reminder, we are now fully into our strategic plan with our mission and our core values and really operationally trying to focus on our strategic anchors of engaging learners, effectively, doing effective work with our operations and communicating and collaborating in ways that can be more effective as well. We've based that strategic plan on the daily desired experiences of our students, our families, and our staff from when the strategic plan was developed a little over a year ago. And really how everything is intended to fit together is blending governance from the board work. So the, the board has the strategic roadmap and the three-year work plan, that long-range plan, and the superintendent evaluation, which many people, if they've been following the district over the last few months, that's really been a lot of what the board's work has been, especially kind of getting that three-year work plan figured out and what's it gonna look like as it gets updated every year. And then on the management side of the strategic plan, we develop a district vision card and we'll talk about that in a little bit, and an operational plan. We have each department of the district that puts together executive summaries that really captures what they do during the course of twelve months. And then each of the buildings, elementary, middle, and high school, develop action cards. And these are really building improvement plans for the year. And that's how they decide what's important for them to work on in support of our strategic plan and those anchors. And then these modern monitoring reports, so what I'm doing now, really feed back over to the governance side to help you as a board understand to what degree are we operationally supporting the strategic roadmap and that three-year work plan and all of that. So this is what the three-year work plan looks like for the public that's watching. This will probably spark some people's memories of the board working on this and the board updates this every year to, to be in line with what both the board wants to accomplish and what the district is attempting to accomplish. Then we move into that operational plan, which is on the right-hand side, and it's really divided up into those three anchors. And those engaging learners encompasses, encompasses things like mental health and literacy and cultural responsiveness and student engagement and aligning curriculum. Effective operations really gets us into program alignment, all the things you're hearing about with teaching and learning and literacy and more of the instructional side of it. And then it also includes our pieces of facilities and maintenance and what are the things we're doing even on the operation side of things that don't have to do directly with instruction and teaching and learning, but more of the behind-the-scenes or related pieces. And then finally, communication and collaboration. And mostly people will, will recognize more and more the work of Carrie Gore on our social media, how we're integrating that, communicating, pushing out more and more pieces of what is truly going on in the district. And, and how are we connecting internally with our communities, whether that's the professional learning communities in each building, between buildings, between the district, and then even outside of the district so that we're paying attention to what's going on, not only inside of the hundred and seventy square miles of Hastings, but also what's going on beyond the, the borders of our district. That operational plan, as I talked before, then really flows into two more specific pieces. You'll see on the top, each one of the departments creates an executive summary. And that executive summary really flows through what are the priorities that that department needs to work on during the course of that year. And they're divided into three, six, and twelve-month segments so that departments can look ahead and say, here's what we plan on doing in the next twelve months, here's what you can see in the next ninety days, and here's what we've done in the last six months as part of our process. And the buildings do a little bit different process. They work with their building leadership teams. This typically happens in the spring and they develop really a building improvement plan and that's what guides them on what they're gonna focus on. So you, as a board, have already seen a lot of pieces from that, from the buildings, elementary, literacy, and literacy, and literacy. All the buildings, safety, the middle school and the high school, secondary programming, innovation teams. And so you're, as we move through the flow of a strategic planning process, this should as a board start becoming something that makes a lot of sense when you see those people at the table as to why they're there presenting this information, because it gives you an opportunity to then reflect on, does our three-year plan, does our strategic plan still meet the needs that we want and are we focusing on the right stuff? And we are gauging this through that vision card. Everyone will remember me presenting the original state of the district with our first round of data for the vision card and that's really what has informed how successful we are being with students, with staff, and with our families and what do we want to focus on now during this school year? Some of the highlights from that vision card, we've talked about this before, it's the same slide that I used before. We had some high-passing classes, percentages at the secondary last year. We recovered a ton of credits at the high school as we came out of the pandemic. We were below the ten percent chronic absences level. Our elementary kids were reading at grade level. We were able to get students information about how do they feel about their own learning? We, using our survey tools with students and teachers and administrators, were able to figure out how do students feel about how the adults are interacting with them relationally, how are we doing? Academically, we maintain that twenty-two point four, twenty-two point something ACT average, which is pretty normal for Hastings. And then most significantly, we've maintained that over ninety-five percent graduation rate. So those are those highlights. You'll remember that I also presented, we've got things that we want to continuously be improving on. So these things, right, that the perception that our students have, the gaps on the MCA, staff perception, parent perception, students passing classes, the number of elementary students reading at grade level. And so that gets us into these action cards. And this is really what I want to talk about tonight. Here's what's going on. These are not repeat slides with information. Right now, you'll remember, focus on literacy at the elementary level. Well, the elementary schools have completed two day-to-days so far focused on what they've identified as learners, learners that are struggling and how do they target those interventions? They have some data that they've already seen and improved on. Over seventy-five percent of the Title I students met accelerated growth goals in January. So the first semester was a huge success with what those elementary buildings are putting into place. You'll remember, we purchased some new decodable texts. They've started using those as their guiding reading and they've continued, continued with that literacy coaching. And that has had a huge improvement because it's, it's a lot of work to expect the teachers to do this on their own. There needs to be some coaching that goes on. And so that is some of the pieces that we've added and we will continue to add. They've also focused on mental health and social emotional learning. And each of the elementary schools right now, each have their own recognition system in place. So I put that there, Pinecrest Pride, McCullough Pride, Kennedy Cougars Care. So they each have an official program that's working to identify when students are doing what we expect them to do from a behavior standpoint. This is part of that PBIS, is part of that multi-tiered systems of support, trying to be on the front end and reteaching the kids, what do we want, what do we, how do we want them to behave? How do we want them to interact with one another so we can get the most learning out of each day? And then finally, the focus on student engagement really comes down to that five D plus teacher evaluation and growth system that we put in place a little over a year ago. One of the components of that is student engagement and that being that way allows us to very objectively look at what's happening in classrooms consistently and what's happening well and where do we need to improve on so that we can keep student engagement at, at high levels. As far as the middle school goes, their focus, graduation, being on track for graduation, they are really looking at a lot of data right now. And the data is focused on kids that are passing all of their classes. You're gonna hear from Alex Hermita here in a little bit, but they're working with him because he has a background in data as well as his equity work. And they're establishing plans like the elementary school for these kids who aren't passing their classes, trying to learn what's going on. Why aren't they passing classes? Is it attendance? Is it a lack of homework that's being done? Is it a lack of being in class even though you're in school? What is it that's going on and how can we do that? Part of it also is making sure that the kids have extra days to just catch up and get the attention on the academic side that they need. So they, like the high school has held, held their first raider connect day. They modeled it after the high school. It allows students to take a day. They wanted to try it out and see how well it worked and they've got another one planned coming up. So it's been a successful way for them to engage with these students that are struggling. Their student engagement looks like data again, student walkthroughs, so building principals doing observations, really looking at the data and what does it look like? What are they seeing? Are all three principals at the middle school seeing the same things across the same classrooms? Both good things and things to work on. And how do they utilize that in a constructive way with teachers so that it really feels like we're able to move people to the next level of student engagement and not gotcha moments? More of, this is really what it looks like to be a basic strategy in the classroom. If you could take it to this level and do this, this, and this, that's how we get students more engaged. That's the type of conversations that are happening. And then multi-tiered systems of support is really a big piece at the middle school. And it's a little bit ahead of schedule from the standpoint of that positive behavior intervention system that they've had in place. So they've been working that PBIS for quite a while now. This is really starting to dig in with new processes based on what they've done in three classrooms. So they're taking the angle of, let's look at three different classrooms, what's working and what's not working with what we're implementing before we try to scale this thing to the whole middle school. So they're doing some, some work in a little different way and that's gonna be able to be scaled as we move forward. Then finally, we move to the high school. They're also focusing, focusing on the on-track to graduation and that achievement gap. They're also focusing on the on-track to graduation and that achievement gap. They are doing those continued dives. You'll remember, last year, we talked a lot about the gains they were seeing in ninth grade. The high school group is really figuring out, how do they continue to see the gains with the college credits, or the high school credits that they're able to get the kids recovered in, that are even at mid-year getting behind? So how do we implement that before we get to the end of the year? And then, what do those interventions, much like the middle school, need to look like based on the data? Again, figuring out, doing a lot of work and conversations between teachers, the counseling department, the administrators, what is working and not working? And a great example is that mid-year math lab for the algebra students. How are we gaining more knowledge about how kids are learning in Hastings at the more local level? Focusing on relationships, that advisory program is really working strong, and they're to a spot where they are needing to work on the fidelity. So are kids in one advisory able to get the same level of experience in another advisory and another advisory, so that our students are seeing an experience that is helpful to them in the areas of mental health and participation and relationships? And then finally, student engagement. Their innovation process, the biggest thing they've got right now is they actually utilize their, a good number of students, to give them the input for their innovation and program review process that you're going to hear about in about three weeks. And so that's how they're really focusing on how do they engage the older students in something that is real to the high school and not just academic in the classroom. So a little bit different twist on that one. With that, I'll do my best to answer any questions you may have, but that is an update of where we are and how things are different from how we presented on strategic planning last year, and we're going to collect this data, collect this data, collect this data. Now it's, here's the data, here's the plans, here's what it looks like in process.
Do we have any questions this time, Director Zuzik?
So as I begin this, it's only half-formed, as I say it, so I apologize if it's rambling, but, you know, what I've noticed is that when people look at data, sometimes they're just looking for the brass ring, like they want the data to affirm what it's intended to affirm. And although it's great when it does, it's really important that we look at it when it doesn't. And is it more that we're looking to affirm what we have set forth as goals? Or are we really looking at the data, taking it for what it's at, and then projecting forward from there? How's the team doing with that, Dr. McDowell?
So I'd say that the teams are being the hardest on themselves. They're, as we know, when you, particularly when you bring a group of educators together and start looking at data, and you make it about what's happening at a systems level and not you personally, they do a really good job of figuring out where those holes are, where those gaps are, because they know where they want their kids to be. They know what they want their kids to do, and what, to your point, what the data allows them to see are really more spots of what's the reality. So again, presenting it as, this isn't necessarily good, it's not bad, it is what it is, and what do we do to continually improve? Because in the end, we need to figure out for our kids in Hastings, how do we meet each of them where they're at? That's the ultimate goal. Meet them where they're at and then move them along. And then, how do you do that when there's 30 of them in a room and you're trying to navigate that? And that's why the team needs to be there to help support that. And so I appreciate the question, because it is really not about just that pie in the sky, we're doing great things. It's, what do we identify and celebrate, and what do we capture that we need to work on, so that we're not leaving any kid behind?
Thank you, and that's exactly what I was hoping to hear, because it's about the culture of growth that we need to be most intentional about. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions this time, are we moving to the buildings report? Are we moving to?
We are moving to communications. So while Becky's bringing this up, we have a little different presentation. We have Jeff Deller, who's going to come up on the screen in front of the board here. The audience will just have to pretend that they're seeing the back of Jeff's head. But Jeff is out of state. He was in-state last week when this meeting was supposed to happen, so he was going to do this live for you. But we figured that we didn't want to wait any longer, and so this is the next best thing. We'll try to hook up the microphone, so that it picks up Jeff as best as possible. And just to give a little bit of introduction, so Jeff is what is considered our strategic communication person. So Kerry Gore does our day-to-day operations. Jeff's role is really to capture all of the things that we tell him is going on in Hastings, where we're at, and in this case, specific to a referendum timeline. And his job is to help us, and by us, I mean you as a board and us administratively, make sure that we have things that we're doing in order and getting messaging out and making decisions as it relates to communications, because the communications piece ends up running parallel to any type of a referendum conversation. With that, I'll turn it over to Jeff, and he can fix anything that I've misspoken about.
I think you're on track, Bob. Well, good evening, Madam Chair, and board members, and those of you in the audience. Again, my name is Jeff Deller. I'm with a company called Deller PR. This is my anniversary, and when I say that, I mean it's the anniversary of my business. We've been around for 12 years as of today, as of March 1st. So a little bit of introduction about me and then, and our company, and then we'll move forward to talk more about referendum communications. And so, you should be able to see my screen here. And so let's move forward. So again, about us, we, this is our mission statement. We improve communities through exceptional public relations, marketing, and strategic counsel. I'm going to skip through some more of these things, because they're, because I want to get to the real meat of our presentation. There are a few of us at work here, and that may be taking part in helping to provide strategic communications planning for Hastings Public Schools. So your situation, most of you on the board are probably quite well aware of your situation. For those of you who are in the audience, this might be new information. The operating levy expires, and there's, the school district relies on the operating levy. This is the local property tax for a significant portion of its budget, and without the operating levy dollars, there would be some significant financial problems that the district would face. And so it is time to look at, what do we do about renewing that levy or potentially increasing that levy? So a challenge that the school district has faced is that it has, over the last three years, it has done some budget reductions totaling $3.5 million. And a lot of that is due to enrollment decreasing. It's not decreasing a lot, and it's not decreasing because of anything other than fewer people are having babies. And so, but, students are tied to what the level of funding is, and so therefore, revenue is decreasing in the school district. In addition to that, state funding is not increasing as quickly as inflation. And so, for an example, this year, it is proposed that the state would increase revenue on the general fund formula about 5%, which is a significant amount. It would be one of the largest state funding increases ever. However, inflation last year was about 6.8%, and so it is still, even with that large increase that is anticipated, not guaranteed, there's still a potential that the state funds will not make school districts whole this year. The district will be in debt within a year or two if nothing is done, and so therefore, the school board has to make a decision. What is, what would the board ask of its taxpayers? And so you're in a process right now of providing information to members of the community, getting feedback to determine basically how much to ask of taxpayers. So what is the strategy to do this? And you've been embarked on a strategy for over a year already, beginning with building relationships within the community. You know, your superintendent is extremely active in the community and is a member of various groups. He presents to those groups. He has given the state of the district presentation to a number of different community groups. People in the community know who the superintendent is, and they know who some of the other school district leaders are, and they know who you are as school board members. So building relationships is important, because we want to make sure that people have a trusting relationship with the school district. The other piece is infrastructure, which is building the communications infrastructure, and this is where Kerry Gore has been instrumental in, providing an e-newsletter on a weekly basis, providing direct mail to all homes in the district on a quarterly basis, building that communications infrastructure, making sure that people know how to get information from the school district. The next step is community engagement, starting now and lasting through the spring, that will lead to some decision by the school board in June, and then running this operating e-referendum in the fall, on November 7th. So there are, and Deller PR has worked on nearly 40 school district referenda over the last about 15 years. I'm counting my time when I was a communications director at Robbins Deller School of Fire, worked on a couple of referenda there. And what we've learned over time is that this community engagement phase is extremely important. It helps you to understand better where people feel, if they recognize that you do in fact have a problem to solve. And then, that community engagement, which includes the survey that will be done by Morris Leatherman, that community engagement helps you to design a good project, and the definition of a good project is, one that clearly solves a problem that people understand is a real thing, and does so in a way that seems responsible. It's not too much. You're not asking for luxury, you're asking for your needs. The school district then has to do a good job of telling its story, and you need committed advocates. You need people to be on a yes committee that can help carry this school district's story in a different way. So it feels like there's two different groups that are telling their story. It's the district and it's a citizens campaign, but it's really, there kind of is a dotted line there, because members of the school board, and employees can be a part of the citizens campaign. The goal of the district's informational campaign is to inform everyone, and you can only share facts. School boards and school districts cannot advocate for or against a candidate or question, and so your job is to communicate in a neutral manner. Then, you're going to, again, do some research to develop a comprehensive plan. That research includes that survey here in the spring, and then you're going to use your traditional means of communicating with all residents in the community. Excuse me. So the yes committee is different. It operates to win, and it operates completely separate of the district independently. It has to raise its own money in order to be able to do the work that it is going to do, but it has the latitude to be able to advocate. So while the school district can say, please vote November 7th, the yes committee can say, vote yes, November 7th. So its approach is more of a political campaign approach, meaning it targets different groups of people, and then GOTV stands for getting out the vote. And so the goal here is to identify yes voters and get them to polls. So this community engagement that we're embarking on now looks like this. We speak with you about what the plan is. You have to go through a rate sizing process, which is something that most school districts do in Minnesota about this time, unless there's significant growth in enrollment, and you don't have to worry about that. But that's where you're at right now. But then you develop budget assumptions through your financial advisor. What do you think is going to happen for increases in revenue from the state of Minnesota? What's the inflation rate? And what if your operating levy was to stay the same, or what if it was to increase? So there are a number of other variables that come into making budget assumptions, but that's coming to you in March. In April, we want to tell the district's story. So we want to meet with staff members, so that they know what the situation is in the school district. Some years ago, you had a group called The Business Think Tank that went into the high school, and they talked about what high school students would need to know before they graduate. We're going to pull that group back together again. They're a group of what we would call opinion leaders or key communicators in your community. And so we want to share the situation with them and hear what they have to say about that. Similarly, we would meet with parents in April and May. A community opinion survey takes place in April, but you'll hear the report in May on that community opinion survey. And then, the first of the superintendent, or I guess maybe the second phase of the superintendent going out and doing what we call the road show. He's been on the road to various community meetings to talk about the state of the district, and now it's time to go and talk about what you've learned through assumptions, through the survey, and just keep people updated in the community about what's happening. And all of this information goes into supplying the board with the information that you need to make an informed decision about what to put on the ballot. You know you have, that your levy is expiring, so you know that there will be something on the ballot. Will it be a renewal, or will it be an increase? And how much would that increase be? And this engagement work will help you to make that decision. All throughout this process, there will be communication that goes out to these same groups of staff, key communicators, families within your school district, and the general So what are the roles and next steps? This is taken from a brochure that the Minnesota School Boards Association has put together on what's allowed and what is not allowed in communication about a referendum. So there's this little section about personal expression, and I just want to blow that up, so you can read it, that board members and staff can serve on vote yes or vote no committees during their personal time. That means that at the board table, board members are not allowed to advocate, but when you are not serving as a member of the school board, you have the right to free speech as an individual in the community, same with your staff members, and they have the ability to work on vote yes or vote no committees. Again, during their personal time is the key. So we love it when school board members are visible in your support of your school district and serving as community eyes and ears. The superintendent can't be everywhere. You've got great networks that you are a part of, and so having you serve as eyes and ears about what's going on in the community, what are people saying, and reporting back to the superintendent is very useful. And of course, you can share, even in your role as a school board member, you can share the district's informational messages, but you can also take a role in the citizens committee if you choose. So meanwhile, the administrative team is also working to provide factual information on work time to staff and to families, answering questions, providing information in parent traffic spaces, et cetera, making sure that people get the information. And then I like to finish with this, because often we look at a lot of words on the screen, and when it comes down to it, what you do as a school board is to provide the resources necessary to teach children, so that they can be productive members of your society. And so it's important to keep kids in mind when we talk about these things. So I would also be willing to take any questions that you have, and I thank you for your attention tonight.
Thank you very much. I see a lot of note-taking going on.
I see a lot of note-taking going on around the board table, and I was moving some of those schedule items, just for the board members' knowledge, I was moving some of those items from the schedule that we saw into our board calendar, just so we have consistent language between what's being used in the Deller presentation today, and then the things that we will see as a reminder in our board calendar. Does anybody have any questions at this time from the board table? Director Davis?
I just wanted to make sure I was clear on something. There was a, you made a comment about, you know, during the part of the process, during the course of the summer, early summer, that we'd be, I'm getting feedback, I'm not sure. Okay, maybe I need to move it further away from me?
I'm going to mute myself.
Oh, that would hurt.
Okay, that works too. Anyway, I'll make it quick. My understanding is that from the engagement perspective, as we're going through this engagement, it will help be an indicator as to whether, as to what dollar amounts are going to be within acceptable ranges within the community, correct? We'll be utilizing as part of our guardrails?
That is very correct, especially the survey helps you to learn that information. The survey is a telephone survey that goes to about 400 or 500 members of your community, so the margin of error is within about four and a half or five percent or so. And so you can assume that the data that you receive from that survey is accurate to accurately represent your entire community. One of the questions that's asked on that survey is, what dollar figure do you think that you would be willing to increase your property taxes by? And there's a number of different values that are asked, and so it might be, I don't know your community well enough to know what dollars we might ask for, but it could be that we might ask for, here's 90 more dollars per year, here's 120 more dollars per year, here's 160 more dollars per year. And that, by the way, we ask those questions in random order so that we're not seen as kind of leading people in what, in a direction or another. And so the results of that will show you, here's where people stand, here's what people think that they can afford and what they're willing to invest in the school district.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions around the board table at this time. I would point out to board members again that at our work session, which will, because of the delay of this meeting, will just be next week, we'll have an opportunity to, as a board, discuss this presentation a little bit, look at the linkage between this presentation, and giving some direction to our community engagement committee as we try and form that mission, which is revised a little bit from previous years, and so we'll be springboarding off this conversation next week. Thank you very much for accommodating our meeting switch. We very much appreciate hearing this as close to in-person as technology allows.
They got, they made me a wonderful dinner that I wouldn't have gotten had I been at your school board meeting, so it kind of worked out for the best for me too. Thank you very much, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent McDowell, do we have, are you in charge of any more presentations at this time, or is it? Then I think we will get back onto our agenda under Building Construction Fund project update. Yeah, and I would ask Ms. Hubert to provide a summary of our current status. Thank you.
Thanks.
And I'm actually going to point something out, and I saw a couple folks that were in attendance trying to capture slide presentations off the television screen, which is fine. I will also point out that Mr. Deller's presentation, as well as Jen's presentation, or Ms. Hubert's presentation, excuse me, are all attached to Board Book. And so, you know, it's great if you want to grab a capture on your phone, but you could also follow through the district website and find that presentation at your convenience.
Thank you. So the Building Construction Fund accounts for the money the district received from the voter-approved bonds, and the money can really be used for school renovations and improvements. So the two updates that we've had from last month, the first one is the high school carpet project. So that project was split into two different phases, so I'm moving that project back to in process. And the second phase of that project is going to be the high school staff office pods. It was always part of the original scope, it was just that that project got broken into two different phases. So that is now back in process. And then the second update is that the high school parking lot improvement, which is Phase 3, it was the lot over by the tennis courts, and then the small lot north of the track, that project is complete. Right now, our contingency balance is at about $938,000. And that's all I have for updates.
Thank you, Ms. Hubert. Are there any questions at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to our next report, and I see that as the policy committee report. Director Malm, Vice Chair Malm?
Thank you. So on January 25th, our meeting was canceled, so you do not, obviously, you don't see a summary there, but we did meet today, and you'll receive that summary on March 22nd at our meeting. So some of the policies we talked through today don't reflect on this January 31 summary, but I think it's important to highlight them because you will see them, actually, the next one is 601, and then you'll see 208. So I am going to just kind of briefly discuss what the committee talked about today, in addition to our January 31 summary. So with 601, after our policy, after this, this summary here, we'll dive into the second read of policy 601. At that time, I want to point out a few different clerical concerns that were addressed during our policy committee for this afternoon. Because we're going through the summary, it makes more sense to actually dive into the policy to take a look at those. We then broke down on January 31st, the 2023 policy review cycle by quarters, and we're on track with that direction. I do want to give a huge shout out to Director Dressley. She put together this very robust policy review cycle spreadsheet, incredibly comprehensive, and it's something that the policy committee is going to be using moving forward, so thank you for all your effort. That was not an easy task. And then we'll be asking the board to, if we can bring a handful of policies to a work session in the near future before the committee tackles those policies. So those particular policies, if you recall, would be like policy 209, 212, and 215 before the policy committee starts those. That way, we can get direction from the board as a whole before we get to work on those particular policies. Policy 208, the committee recommends approval today. There was a comment previously, I believe at the last meeting, but don't quote me on that, that for consideration of changing the term "public comment" to "public input", at this time, we recommend approving policy 206 as is, sorry, 208. However, with the upcoming policy 206, which, great news, I think we will have that for first read at our next meeting. 208 will be considered and revised at that time, depending on the direction the board goes with 206. And at that time, we could change the verbiage if the board as a whole feels it would be beneficial. And then our next meeting is on March 29th, so Director Zuzik, Director Dressley, if there's any other items, or if we're ready to move on to that 601 second read.
I just want to point out that I had scanned this prior to what I thought was going to be the meeting last week, and I saw that request from the policy committee to bring some items to a work session for discussion, and I tentatively put it on our April 12th agenda for the work session, and just left it open at this time, a discussion led by the policy committee for board input. So let's, if, as we talk about that more, as you talk about it as a committee, if April's not the right time, it's certainly easy enough to reschedule, but I didn't want us to lose that request from the policy committee.
Really appreciate it. We talked about it today, and with all the shuffling of work sessions and retreats and board meetings, we weren't sure when we would be able to get that on the agenda, so I appreciate that. Okay. So moving into policy 601, which is a second read, if you open it to Section 4A3. I don't believe in this document, it'll reflect it, but I just want to point out, yeah, so we ended up changing, so you see that 3 subparagraph A, we got rid of the A, we just rolled it into one paragraph. And then 4C4, I hope. It's a very big policy. No, that's not it.
4C.
4.
It's highlighted in purple, only 4.
Okay, right there. So the purple, and then if you scroll down to 4.
Yep.
Thank you. We did the same thing, rolled it into one paragraph. She doesn't know it yet, but Rachel is going to do an extensive cross-reference with this policy and the other 600 serious policies. And then state statute, as we know, it does a really great job of outlining what the district needs to do to bring students up to their grade level, and little is mentioned about gifted and talented, or those that really excel academically, but are not necessarily in the gifted and talented program, so Ms. Larson has graciously accepted the, she's going to provide a presentation about our gifted and talented program, which I'm really excited to know about because I know very little about that program. So when we receive that presentation, I think it would be a good time, at that time, to ask the procedural and policy questions about how we challenge students to, you know, be their best selves academically and in the arts, you know, how are we challenging our students to be their best selves? I'll open it up for comments.
I had sent an email, just wondering if the policy committee spoke to adding the experiential learning piece of the policy that's in MSBA's policy, or if that wasn't discussed at all.
It was not discussed today, no.
I guess I'd like to ask the board to consider adding that in, because I think experiential learning, hands-on learning, is an important component, and I guess I don't see why we would want to exclude that when it is in MSBA's model policy. And then the other questions that I had, we have, I think it's just one now, or is it two? One item that is included in the definitions portion of the policy, but it's not used anywhere else in the policy, and I guess typically, my experience is that you would include a definition, which is, the intent is to be used later in the policy. And the one that's in there right now is inclusive educational program, so it's defined but not used.
I apologize. I do remember seeing your email. I'd have to go back and take a look at, I did get an answer too, so I apologize, I didn't follow, I was gone all last week, so I'll follow up with you, unless Superintendent McDowell, you recall, I'll follow up with you on that one. Thank you.
That's all I had.
Are there any further comments at this time? Seeing none, but I still hear a couple of outstanding questions. I would anticipate that we maybe see this back at an additional read, at which time we could consider it, depending on how much change there is or isn't for action. But for that, we would not need board action at this time, we'll just see it come back as an additional read at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, I see consensus. I would also like to point out that when you tasked Ms. Larson with that work effort, she smiled and nodded vigorously, which I read to be acceptance. Okay. All right, thank you. Oh, some people might have read it as surprise. I read it as acceptance. Thank you. I just needed to ask a question about a future agenda item, so I went off mic. At this time, we're going to move to our action items, the first of which is consent Maybe we will not be moving there, one moment. So for clarification, we have an item that's currently in consent, which is the American Indian Parent Advisory Council letter that Mr. Hamida was intending to speak to. So if there's consensus at this time to remove that item from the consent agenda, I would ask for a motion in a second, we'll just do it that way.
I would make a motion to remove that item from the consent agenda.
Becky can sort that out, I don't know who gets credit for the second. It will have to be reviewed in slow motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That motion is unanimous. So that'll be our first action item following approval of the consent agenda. So I would at this time accept a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with that singular item moved out.
So move, Davis.
Seconded, Dressley.
I don't understand the dynamics of second, but we have a motion in a second. Some are so popular, and some, there's a pause.
You made everybody gun shy after the last.
Maybe, maybe that was it. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that was not my intent. All right, thank you. So we have a motion in a second for approval of the consent agenda, motion Davis, second, Dressley, is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Our next, our action item, our following consent agenda then, is the American Indian Parent Advisory Council, letter, acceptance of the letter, signature of the letter? If we could ask Mr. Hamida to come to the table?
Absolutely. So this item is the board accepting the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee resolution. Dr. Alex Hamida is our district equity coordinator, and so we just asked him to be here because this is, again, one of those things that only happens once a year. It needs to happen as part of the process through the Minnesota Department of Education, and so that's why we asked Alex to be here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam Chair, Directors, according to Minnesota statute, the board has to look over the resolution of concurrence or non-concurrence, which was determined by the chair of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. She looked at it, looked at the goals of the district, and decided that the current educational offerings of the district meet the recommendations for American Indian students, and so she signed a vote of. And so she signed a vote of concurrence, meaning that there is compliance essentially from the district. And the, now what we need to do, or what all of you need to do as a board is sign the letter, the resolution of concurrence to submit to the Department of Education. Any, any questions?
Do we have any questions? Thank you. Press your mic button. Thank you. Hearing none, I would accept a motion in a second to accept the American Indian Parent Advisory Council Resolution.
I, I would make a motion to accept the Parent Advisory Council motion. And it, just here in representative of the board, it would be the school board chair that would be signing it.
Thank you. Motion, Director Zuzik, second Vice Chair Malm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Our next item for individual action is a motion to approve the principal's contract. This time I would entertain a motion in a second.
So moved, Davis.
So moved, or second, Malm.
I'm just going to apologize again because apparently my words were stronger than I intended them to be. And nobody should be shy about making a second. We have a motion by Treasurer Davis, second Vice Chair Malm, to approve the principal's contract. Do we have any discussion? Director Tate?
Yes, I had, I had sent an email last week just asking about a few, a few questions that I had mostly around some wording issues. And I'm just curious if those were, if those were checked into and considered. Yes, I have the list of all the information that you sent and all of those will be reviewed when we do the final review of the contract. Thank you.
Are there any further comments? All right. Hearing, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table to approve the principal's contract signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our next action item is a motion to approve Policy 208, Development, Adoption and Implementation of Policies. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved, Dresley.
Second, Malm.
Thank you. Is there any comment or discussion on the motion on the table? Director Tate?
Yes, I just, I had a concern regarding the lack of, of verbiage in here for if there are no changes recommended. Basically, this policy is set up so that a, a policy could be brought forward from the Policy Committee to be voted on and approved in one meeting. And my concern is that, one, it doesn't give the public a significant amount of time, perhaps if they would like to give some feedback. And my other concern is that when, for example, the board is preparing for a meeting and they aren't on the committee, you're hit with usually multi-hundred-page agenda to review at the same time as a, considering a policy. And I was, I had requested that that verbiage be added in. And so with that, I, I'm not in favor of this policy at this time.
Thank you, Director Tate. Do we have any other comments?
No.
Vice Chair Malm?
Yes, and I do recall that, that comment, however, we have not heard from the rest of the board. There has been no opposition or to put that in or to, you know, to keep it as is. So with 208 still being under consideration after today, that might be a consideration, but I would ask for the whole board to weigh in.
Are there any further comments on the motion on the table to approve Policy 208? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to one, with Director Tate being the board member in opposition to acceptance, as she stated in her comments. Our next action item is approval of the school calendar year 2023-2024 calendar. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved, Davis.
Second, Dresley.
Thank you. We have a motion on the table to approve the 2023-24 calendar. Motion was David, Director Davis, second Director Dresley. Is there any discussion? Director Tate?
So I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what, what this is. So September 5th and 6th are set up to be raider set-go days for K through four. And the intent is to have, I guess what you call mini-conferences with, between the, the parents and the teachers. Is, is the understanding that the parents would have to come in during the school day? Or would there be any, any allowance for parents to come in evenings or at all if, if they shouldn't be able to take off work or whatnot for that time?
So the specifics for when those times happen are yet to be decided. My guess is that because it's something that's important for the, the teachers to put together and was part of the process of this, is that there will be accommodations made to figure out how they can get those kids scheduled over the course of those two days.
Could we have a little bit of clarity as to what the ready-set-go days, what exactly they're, what they are?
Ready-set-go days, raider-set-go days. The reason I'm using ready-set-go is because other districts call it that. We had to come up with a new name, right? So many other districts use these days rather than what we used to do in the summer, which was simply create a day outside of the school calendar year where students would come in and do their reading test and, and that kind of thing. What districts have found is that it's much more manageable for the teacher and it's a much better experience for the student and the family if a day is set up where it does operate like a, the easiest way to visualize it would be a conference day. And what happens during that conference is a combination of those academic benchmark assessment pieces as well as some social, emotional and social activity input. So a teacher has an opportunity to get a glimpse of each one of their students, both academically and socially, before they get to that first day of school. The other thing that it has helped in other districts is it creates a situation where that open house night that for some is great and for some is really anxious ridden, it allows that to become more of a carnival, for a lack of a better term, or a generalized open house for people to come in and focus just on figuring out the building, doing what they do, that type of stuff, and already have done the other pieces individually with a teacher. And lastly, I would say it allows for what we've all experienced in, in conferences where it allows for some private time with the teacher, the parent and the kid without having other people around when you're trying to have those first conversations of the year with that teacher that your student's going to have.
Are there any further comments with regard to the motion on the table? Director Tate?
Yeah, I understand that there were some staff development days added in here and just reflecting on like what happened last week and over Christmas or, or winter break and everything. How are we sitting with this proposal for the, I know e-learning days were allowed five and, and then of course there's additional snow days. How are, how are we sitting with like, with next year versus where we were this year?
We're in a really good spot because we have more days than we need to begin with. That was the only reason why we were looking at or had the ability to look at, do we reduce student contact days by a couple? And it still gives us two days of, if you want to call them wiggle room in there. And the other thing to remember, what happens is if we get into a situation where we would utilize all of our e-learning days and then all of a sudden we have a vortex or something and have to do a week of snow days, we can bring to the board recommendations for any of these non-student contact days and make them student contact days, or you can add to the calendar at the end of the year. So from that standpoint, we just need to make sure that we have a minimum of 165 days because that's their statutory requirement. As far as hours go, which is the other requirement, the only group that really becomes a group that we need to watch are 11th and 12th graders. And so we just monitor that and, and adjust the calendar as needed if we have to.
Thank you.
So any further discussion with regard to the motion on the table? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the presented 2023-2024 school year calendar signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Our next action item is approval of the 2024-2025 school year calendar. I get a motion in a second.
I make a motion to approve the 24-25 calendar as written.
I, I second that motion.
Thank you. We have a motion, Director Zuzik, second Director Dresley, to approve the 2024-2025 school year calendar. Is there any questions or concerns, questions or comments with regard to this calendar? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to reflect on if I have to ask that if I know it's unanimous, but I'll decide by next month. Our next action item is a monument sign budget transfer. All right, let's hear from Ms. Hubert first and then I'll take a motion or section, a motion in a second to, to take action. Directors, Hubert.
Okay, so through the bond fund, there was a monument sign project that was previously approved. It has now gone out to bid and the bids are coming in higher than the original budget. Keep in mind that budget was approved over, I think, a year and a half ago. So some things have changed in the market since then. In addition, you know, like you can see there's a letter that kind of details the factors that are influencing the budget. And it's, you know, really just the cost of materials, the cost of the stone. There's some additional locations. So the district had always planned on doing a, a sign at the nature preserve land, but then working through that with Joe Beatty, who works very closely with that land, he planned on doing an additional interpretive sign that would have much more detailed information about, you know, where the, how the land was donated and what is on the land. And it really just made sense then for consistency, just that the district would provide the base and he's still obtaining separate funding to, to purchase the interpretive part of that sign. So we're adding in, it was an alternate to the bid, adding in the base to that sign. And then just the locations, as we started working through the project more, there's some places where there's currently some landscaping that would have to be removed in order to put in a new monument sign. And then just the general market conditions. So the, the kind of choices at this point are we could either, you know, not approve the transfer and the project just doesn't go forward, or approve the transfer of an additional $202,000 to complete the project.
Thank you. So I would ask that the, that the audience maintain the respect that they've shown to this point. Thank you. So we have the, we had the contingency that you spoke to earlier with our bond funding, which is only available for project construction.
Correct.
Of about $900,000. And this would be 200-ish thousand out of that 900. Is that?
Correct.
A correct understanding?
So this is all coming out of the, the building construction fund.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would accept a motion in a second to approve the recommended fund transfer and we'll be open for discussion. Once the motion in a second is on the table, we'll be open for discussion.
I move to approve the transfer of the violence.
This is my trick. I read the recommended motion when I'm saying the motion. That helps me. Motion to approve, so we have a motion to approve the recommended fund transfer from Director Dresley. Do we have a second?
Second, Zuzik.
Thank you. Second from Director Zuzik. Is there any discussion? Director Davis?
I'm curious as to, so since we're looking at something being kind of out of the original budget, are there other, are there other considerations, other things that are part of some of the building things that might be sitting, for lack of a better word, on the bench right now that we might want to bring forward rather than this? Is there something that, that might be a better alternative to us than doing this right now? That's sitting on the bench right now in terms of some of the things that would fall under the bond that we might be able to do instead of?
There potentially could be, however, of the original list that we had worked through with the board, we have now tackled everything that was on that original list. So it would have to be something new. At one point, we talked about money that was left in contingency would be for technology. So that's still an option, but we didn't have any unfunded projects that we wanted to move forward with at the time we had the discussion.
Are there any other questions? Director Davis?
I'm sorry, just to follow up to that, Ms. Hubert, and that, where would that leave us? If we were to approve this, where would that leave us in terms of where we sit?
So there'd be roughly 700,000 still sitting in contingency.
Thank you.
Okay, Director Tate? I was trying to decide if she was, if Director Malm was moving towards the button or not, but I'm, I'm going to say Director Tate and you can reflect.
Just my opinion, I guess. I'm, I'm struggling with spending this much money on signage at this point, I guess.
I'm sorry, I need to ask that, that the audience maintain decorum and quiet. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I, I just, I think that we should relook at possibly looking at like technology, for example, that would be utilized by the students and be more impactful in that way instead of signage.
Are there any other comments? Director Malm?
Well, I was just trying to take a look at our bond summary because there is, you know, the other district projects, if you take a look at technology improvements. So I would, I would be curious to know what additional, I mean, there's always improvements when it comes to technology because it grows so fast. What, I kind, I, I do tend to agree that, you know, if we have this money available, while I, I see the value in, in the signage, I, I would prefer that it go into our classrooms first, if, if that's something that the whole board were to agree on and administration for that matter. So I'm, I'm kind of struggling with this a little bit, but I'd, I'd be curious to know what additional items there are that could be used in the, in the classroom.
I'll take this opportunity to concur with Director Tate and Director Malm. I think that if we can push it and if we can use it under the, the allowances, under the bond rules to push it back into the classrooms, I'd prefer to do that at this time rather than that, than, rather than this.
I'm going to weigh in with, Director Dresley, did you want to go next? Okay. I'm going to weigh in as a person that participated in the original discussion and facility committee at the time that we were allocating funds across the board and say that, that this was a project that in the course of discussion did meet the, the criteria of our facilities committee and it was, quite honestly, an opportunity that it is unlikely to, to be funded under many, if any, of our other capital. that it is unlikely to, to be funded under many, if any, of our other capital projects, right? And we have, I know the word technology is appealing, but we have technology funds that we are currently using and have set aside, and we've allocated a notable amount of our bond dollars to this point on technology investments. And I think if we want to maintain some visibility and consistency in the community, this would be, this would be not, just not making the fund transfer, it would be not doing the monument work at all. Right? So I think that this is a piece of celebrating the facilities that we have and acknowledging to the community that these are school district ISD 200 pieces. We have had extremely good fortune, extremely good fortune with regard to our bids to this point. We have had, I would say, less than five, I can't even, I don't even know if it's five, that have come in over our budgeted amount. And I think that, given that that's the case, and that this is a, this is a piece that, quite honestly, at the time, we would, we had anticipated the projects that were approved would have used all of the contingency. And we are at a place where we're still even making this change. We're still going to have $700,000 that will be available to that next discussion. I stand in support of the motion on the table. Director Dressley, are you ready?
I would agree that I would stand in support of, this land was donated to us, if I'm not mistaken, that's, yep. Yeah, part of it was donated to us, and I think it's important to recognize that and have consistency throughout with all of our signage and promotions of the district.
Director Malm?
Is, would we run into any conflicts if we were to table this vote to our March 22nd meeting in hopes of getting additional information and to see what?
What additional information would you be interested in having?
Oh, golly. Yeah. And see, this is where I feel very conflicted because I do see the value in having, having this in place, but I'm also curious if there, if there's other ways that, that this could be spent.
Okay, two things. One, there's always other ways that this can be spent, although this is going to be spent within the constraints of bond dollars. So that's an important thing to understand. I would like to ask Director Hubert if she has something to weigh in with here and some information for us.
So an additional option could be just redesigning the project completely. And right now, like the stone that would be used in each one of the monument signs is matching the buildings, and that's different stone at each building right now. So that's part of what's contributing to the cost. So we could just reject all the bids, redesign the project. The, using like one consistent stone, it may not match the buildings then, but it could be a, a cost savings.
Just for scale, I'm only going to give this for, this is informational sake. So the bid that we would, that our next action item, in the event that we chose to approve it, the bid would be 364,300. The add here is a couple hundred thousand. Now admittedly, there was design elements in there, and there's other contingency costs in that. I would be surprised, now I'm moving into the place of opinion. That was fact, now I'm into opinion. I would be surprised if modifying the materials would save half of the costs. Right? I think we could potentially get a lower cost, slightly lower cost. I don't think it would be this amount. Again, I just think that, given how far we've come with this and wanting to celebrate the bond work that we've done, and, and the fact of the matter is that we have put substantial dollars and gotten substantially more out of this bond than we anticipated in terms of projects completed. And quite a bit of that has gone back, if, if the idea of into the classroom in terms of flexible furniture and technology investments. Do we have, do we have any further comments otherwise? Director Tate?
I just like to say, while I appreciate that we have done very well with our bids, I don't know how to say this. I, I don't see this then as being kind of, I don't know how, like I said, I don't know how to say this, being like fun money, essentially, like, hey, we have this, we've done so well with all these bids, now, you know, we, we have this extra money to spend. I think, you know, it comes down to being responsible with every single taxpayer dollar in the choices that we make and how to spend that. So, so that's all I want to say.
All right. I would point out, I did not consider this fun money. I don't think representing the public face of the district is, is, falls into the fun money type category. I understand that you're, you're searching for a correct way to, or a more accurate way to represent that, but I, I feel like this is not that. I think, do you have one more thing to add? Director Malm?
Okay, yeah. I guess the way that I look at this is it's not any different than the water tower and putting, you know, home of the Raiders on there too. So it is bringing attention to the district. It is a point of pride within our community. I, I really, I don't, I know, I, I know you didn't mean to say like fun money, but I totally get where you're coming from. I, I, being that it comes from bond dollars and, and not our general fund, if it were a general fund, that would be a totally different conversation. I don't even think we would be having the conversation, quite frankly. I think, I think this is something that I would like to see happen.
All right. Having heard from all of the board members and the call, call for a vote, the motion on the table is to approve the recommended fund transfer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. Motion carries four to two in favor. Director Dressley, Director Zuzik, Director Hadeen, and Director Malm. Thank you. Our next action item is a motion to award the bid for the monument sign project.
So moved to award the bid for the, for the monument project.
Seconded.
All right. Motion Director Zuzik, Second Director Dressley to award the bid for the monument sign project. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Motion carries in favor, Directors Dressley, Director Zuzik, Director Hadeen, and Director Malm. Our next item is to call out future meetings. I would point out that we've got a couple of policy committees on there. We have a work session next week, a regular board meeting on the 22nd, and I anticipate strongly to near 100% probability that we will have an additional work session on the evening of March 29th, as we start to dig into our levy work. And you will see it when, when you get around to it, looking at the board work plan calendar that tentatively identified some of the items that were to be discussed at our retreat, as well as some of the levy items, and then also the innovation team secondary program update have been slotted into that anticipated March 29th meeting. Does anybody else have anything that they're aware of on future meetings that's not currently reflected? Okay. It's, I mean, it's there as an informational piece, and obviously when, when meetings get added, they will be appropriately addressed in public. Thank you. Sorry, I got to get back to board book. All right. At this time, I would accept a motion in a second to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Malm.
Malm.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening and travel safely. Motion was adjourned unanimously.